Good evening. It is 6:30 and having a quorum, I am calling this meeting to order. And having called this meeting to order, I'd like to do a quick civics lesson. And that is, four of us make a quorum, so that's why we're able to start the meeting. And now we have five of us. Mr. Peterson will not be joining us tonight, but we do have quorum. We can conduct business. And just like if we have a full dais or not, it takes three votes for something to pass. It always takes 60 percent for something to move business forward in the city of Bastrop. So, it is 6:30 and we're called to order. I also want to let a couple of folks know, 8B will be pulled from the consent agenda and we will take that as an individual consideration item. And I will also let Colin know that 9B, which is the budget amendment, that will be moved to the end until we've made all of the contract decisions. And so we'll take budget. 9B will be the last item that we call. Okay, I think that's it for making any adjustments to the amendments. So, tonight YMCA provided, the person who's going to do our pledge for us, Kayden, if you'll come forward, you have to come forward and turn around while I talk about you. Kayden Nichols is officially a senior at Bastrop High School, so he's a big man on campus. And Councilmember Ennis, I'm not saying I had anything to do with it, but he is leaning towards UT, so there you go. And considering psychology as a major, and I told him in this small town, he would have plenty of test cases, so that was probably a really good degree for him. But if everyone will please rise, Kayden will be leading us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, unGod, indivisible.
Kayden's also one of our lifeguards, so if you are out at the pool, you will see him, and we appreciate him working for the widest summer. Let's give him a round of applause. Thanks, Kayden, and good luck in your senior year. If you will remain standing, Linda Sparks, who's one of our police chaplains, will be giving us our invocation tonight.
Father God, we just come before you and we take a deep breath and just relax a little, Lord, after this day. And, Lord, I just ask that everything that comes in front of this council, Lord, be considered diligently, like I know that they do, Lord. And I'm just so grateful for that in this little town, because I've lived in a big town and I don't want to live there anymore. And, Lord, I just lift up all the police officers and the firefighters and the emergency workers and the street workers and people behind the scenes in the offices and parks. Lord, I just lift them up and I ask that there be abundance in their families, there be peace in their families. We ask that every one of our law enforcement officers goes home at night. And we just thank you for this city. We thank you for the beauty of it. And we thank you for the wisdom that you give those that govern it. In Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you so much, Chaplain Sparks. Appreciate it. Okay, we're moving on to presentations, and the first one will be the mayor's report. And Colin, we can jump right on into the report. The upper left-hand corner, you'll see that several of us attended the Mike Fisher Building Dedication. That was really neat. And we left there and headed to the TML Small Cities Conference. And Mayor Pro Tem Nelson, Councilmember Ennis, and myself were there, and I was actually on a panel talking about building Bastrop. Below that is a picture of our outstanding BAIPP board. And at our last council meeting, we talked about the 2D and 3D event that they had to give out awards for the artists. Just to the right, you see Mayor Pro Tem Nelson standing underneath the cart sign. The Lee Deal the Operations Complex, we did the ribbon cutting out there. Terry sang at the ceremony. And it was a great ceremony lot, really. What was the, you may want to say that during your report, but how many, do you know how many people you had?
Hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty. It was very, very well attended. The ribbon cutting was for the nibbles program, which is a great program that the Food Pantry does to make sure that kids that are food insecure have backpacks of food so that they are able to eat over the weekend. I took a picture of our county election staff, the first day of early voting. We were glad to have them manning things for us. The upper right-hand corner was the Memorial Day service. There was a really good showing this year. Representative McCall was there. You see a picture of him with Mayor Pro Tem Nelson and Councilmember Peterson. Just a really neat service. It was fun to be a part of that. Then on May 30th, the bottom right-hand corner shows the City Hall Essentials Training. And you see our city attorney and his new wife, and they did City Hall Essentials Training. And it represented, in that room, they had 42 cities, 22 council members, 13 mayors, and five mayor pro temps. And I just loved the seminar because it said that educated leaders make better decisions, and that's what it was all about. So it was really great to host them at the convention center. The next slide, most of us remember the storm of May 30th. And holy cow, was that some crazy weather or what? Particularly right behind me, around the Curd Community Center, I met with one woman when I was walking around taking some pictures, and she said, "I don't care what they said, it was a tornado." And some of the things that she saw, it absolutely was a microburst and it had tornadic winds. But the picture in the middle is the BPNL team. And Trey, I apologize that I didn't pull also the public works team. But during that storm, it's a time for citizens to realize it was, Chief Al Gil, was it 3:00 in the morning? What time were you up and about that night?
4:37.
4:37, not that he remembers. But they did not stop until everybody had service back and the roads were clear. And they are a group of people, the city staff, the first responders, the public work staff, the BPNL staff, they do just a yeoman's work. And it's at a time when you're warm and cozy in bed, and they're out there working, making sure that things are safe. And I just really wanted to give them a special appreciation. These were the, the next slide shows the events that I planned on doing between the 31st and June 11th. And I'd like to call out the Universe of Stories is the Summer Reading Program this year. And on June 19th, they're having the Inflated Hero Event, which is a balloon-twisting story. So if you've got kids or grandkids that would be interested in that, I'd encourage you to take a look at the library's webpage. And then the Building Bastrop Pop-Up Event that we had on Saturday, I believe the city manager's going to have some things to say about that. But what a fantastic event. On the next slide are upcoming events. I am going to do everything I can to try to make the Juneteenth Parade, but the plane lands at 10:00 that morning, and it's pretty iffy if we're going to make it. But Mayor Pro Tem Nelson has said that he would be willing to stand in for me. And I would also like to draw your attention to the June 19th is the annual joint Visit Bastrop City Council Meeting, because that was rescheduled. So that's a new date, and just to make sure everyone is aware of that. So that is my mayor's report. Ms. Rogers, do you have anything to share?
Not particularly. I do have a request, though.
Yes.
I'm going to request that if we can get Main Street to come up and do a report for us on our next agenda, that would be wonderful. You know, Rebecca's been there for a couple months. I think it might give her a chance to come in and tell us how she's doing and, you know, where Main Street stands. It might give her a chance to give us an update, since she's taken over, it's probably about, what, five, six months now? Give her a chance to tell us all of her successes.
That's great.
It may be a report on how Table of Main went, since it was so wonderful.
All right. City Manager, is that clear?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Anything else, Councilmember Rogers?
Nope, I'm good.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes, ma'am. I have a couple of informational items. As y'all may know or not know, I am the city's representative on the Clean Air Coalition. In this past legislative session, we had got a little positive event. The General Appropriations reinstated a local programming for our missions monitoring. Emphasis had been on the local communities contributing the funds to this mandated program. So finally, this state, since they abandoned the funding in 2017, have now reinstated it. And also, CAPCOG has retooled their Commute Solutions website. If people want to find out more about commuting options into Austin because of the heavy traffic on 71, then go to commutesolutions.com.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Nelson. Councilmember Ennis?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to add my congratulations to Mr. Bahorkis's sponsorship of the Essentials Program. I attended it. It was outstanding. And I enjoyed the day and a half of really good educational seminar. I attended BAIPP last Wednesday, where we did a wrap-up of the award ceremony. And they're working hard on future plans and next year's plans. And then we were all together on Saturday at the pop-up.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Jones?
Well, I have several things I'd like to talk about. This is my last meeting. I tried to beat Doc Jackson. I tried very hard, but I didn't. So congratulations. He'll be sitting up here next week. So we'll have a special session next Tuesday to swear him in. So, that being said, the planning and zoning met, and boy, did they have a lot of questions. And they were really good questions. And they were really finding a lot of gaps. And, you know, because those questions are going to come up. They were vetting the new codes and ordinances. And so that was a very long meeting, and it was a very good meeting. So I think that it's great that they're going through that. And just a couple of things I just want the council to consider. You know, we've talked about geographic regions. And one thing I would like us to reconsider is renaming the geographic region Northside North Park. And there's been a group of citizens meeting and really looking at just some pretty exciting things. I don't want to go into it too much, but just really looking at like a 30-year plan for the north side. They pretty much, and not that it was anyone's fault, because somebody has to show up to represent that. But when we started going through all these codes and ordinances and the comprehensive plan, we realized that there was just not very much attention there. And so there's just a group of citizens that got together and decided to do something about it. And they have some pretty exciting plans. So I just wanted to put that out there. It's going to be sort of like a prelude of what's to come. Another thing that I just wanted to bring up is we have all these changes going on downtown, and we are really trying to make sure that those buildings stay full and, just that we support our business people down there, because it's hard. I think that we should really look at the utility bills of customers in historic properties. Because I'm telling you, I've had an historic building downtown, and my utility bill was five times more than my payment. It's just, you know, I mean, it's not unusual for those bills to be several thousand dollars, you know, just running all the kitchens and stoves and trying to heat and cool, and you've got single-pane windows and gaps. I just want the council to think about perhaps in the future, making some sort of a provision for that, just to kind of make it a little bit more level, because it is so expensive to operate downtown. And then the last thing that I would really like to bring up is the rodeo arena. Ever since I've been on council, that's something that's been really near and dear to my heart. So I'm hoping that, I think that the Visit Bastrop Group has maybe picked that up a little bit, and I'm pretty excited about it. But I'm hoping to see something good happen with that. Anyway, that's all I've got.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jones.
It's been an honor to serve with you.
All right. We're on 4C. City Manager?
Yes, ma'am. Before I get into talking about the pop-up project, I too want to brag on the staff on the emergency that happened last Thursday with the wind. That's one of the gracious things about Mother Nature, is meteorologists predict one thing and she decides something else. But it is a real testament to the amount of time, energy, and effort that the organization has put forth with emergency management. I happened to be driving through that storm to leave on vacation, and it was awesome debriefing with the team, because we had prepared, we were prepared, we executed the plan, and it went off exactly the way it needed to go. When I asked about debriefing, there was very little significant things they would have done differently. And I think that is a testament to the quality of the staff that we are blessed to have here in the city of Bastrop, and my hat's off to them. One of the things that happens when you have a windstorm or a tornado is a lot of debris. And all of you appreciate the fact that we have a contractor that we contract with Progressive Waste to pick up our brush. One of the things in our contract is things called acts of God. And that essentially provides them the ability to have some additional time to pick up quantities of brush that are outside the purview of the original contract. And a week ago Thursday constitutes an act of God. So if you ride through town, you're going to find quite a bit of brush. But Trey Jobe has been in contact with them. They have pledged additional resources. They're working hard. And they have told us that by the end of next week, they hope to have things back on a regular schedule. So we would ask that you appreciate the amount of brush that's around citywide and be patient with us as we work with our contractor to address the acts of God that were blessed on us a week ago Thursday. Colin, if you'll advance the slide, I want to talk about the extraordinary team effort that happened on Saturday to make the pop-up project work. And for those of you that didn't participate, I would encourage you to go out to our Facebook, there's a video, and begin to get some of the flavor of what was there, because it was absolutely wonderful. But I first want to start with thanking the two rock stars that made this happen. That is Rebecca Gleason and her counterpart Curtis Hancock. Rebecca did an amazing job of putting together a very organized, methodical task list, assigning those tasks out, and making sure that everything got done. Curtis learned that the easiest thing to do was to just say "yes, ma'am" to Rebecca. But everything that was on Rebecca's task list, Curtis and his team stepped up to the plate just hugely. And they had a great team. Allison Long and Becca Pinlin were right hands to Rebecca, made sure that all of the supplies and all of the vendors and all of the communication pieces were addressed. Helping Curtis was David Juarez, David Unit, Cody Reynolds, Thomas Martinez, Paul Gonzalez. The water, streets, and park staff was on Main Street at 1:00 Saturday morning. They were able to put that together very quickly, because they had spent weeks pre-planning, laying out the sidewalks, numbering the panels, so that they could literally drop that off and begin to make it work, the striping. And they had put together a plan, rehearsed the plan, and executed the plan, and it went flawlessly. The planning staff, Matt Jones, Jennifer Beals, Allison Land, were available to answer questions and were placed throughout downtown to make sure that anybody that had questions could get them addressed. Curtis Ervin, Cheryl Winfro, and the BPNL team, because we have $1.9 million sitting in the bank for the Main Street Rehabilitation Program, we worked with our engineer architect, NWM Designs, and they were able to tell us where the actual streetlights are going to be placed. So we've ordered them. And they figured out a way to install them without hooking them up, so that you had a very real-life experience. When Curtis decides he wants something, he makes it happen. And so we had to put the rush on those streetlights, but the vendor didn't disappoint Curtis. And they showed up, and they were installed. And so hats off to the BPNL team that made that happen. The convention center staff came out early. They wanted to be a part of the team that helped put it together. They had a big production Saturday night at the convention center, so they were part of the team that put it out. And they immediately went to the convention center and got busy with their event for Saturday night, which was, I think, Boots and Bingo with Cosar. I hope I got that right.
Yeah.
The finance team, we had a budget. We're real sticklers about making sure that we get our budgets met. And clearly, we were doing business with a lot of vendors that we had not done business with. We had some artists and some other things. And so they made that a priority and got them in the system, so we could get that taken care of. Victoria Pincheck runs all of our special events. She does incident action plans, just as if we were doing some type of FEMA emergency. So she had an event plan outlined, and it went off flawlessly. We appreciate Colin and Rick. We did quite a bit of time-lapse video, recorded that, because we appreciate that that's some wonderful storytelling that we will have an opportunity to use in the future. Thanks to Trey Jobe and James Al Gil, who got out there at 1:00 and were just present. There's always the last-minute things that you need somebody to either make a decision or do, and they were out doing whatever needed to be done to ensure the success, and I appreciate them. Chief Nagy, Kenny Mack, Lance Marner, and the police officers provided security and made sure that Main Street was clear at midnight, so that when they got there at 1:00, all the vehicles were gone and we could actually set the system up. We are not an island, so we appreciate all of our partners that we have. Simple City Design, Matt Lewis, Bowie in Company, which is Jed Bowie and Patty Hickson, and then MWM Design. And Tony, I can't pronounce Tony's last name, I'm sorry, but it is, Tony is our man. Can you help me?
Bonadonna.
Say it.
Bonadonna.
Bonadonna. That's why I struggle. Mayor Schroeder, Mayor Pro Tem Nelson, and Councilmember Ennis were there all day. They walked around. They worked at answering questions and making sure that we got all of the handouts. And it truly was an extraordinary team effort. We got a tremendous amount of positive feedback, and people are extremely excited, want to know when we're going to start. But Rebecca was clearly the front person, and I sure want her to get the credit. But I wanted everybody else to appreciate that this was as team and effort as we've done in a long time. Staff was extremely excited about it, very proud of the work that they did, and rightly. So will y'all join me in giving them a round of applause?
All right. Moving on, I'm on the bottom of page one, receive, I'm on item 4D, receive presentation from Bastrop County Interim Chief Appraiser, but really, it's our full-fledged new appraiser, Fon Collins, Chief Appraiser effective August 1st, Regarding Appraisal District Values and Activities. You're a very popular lady. Come on up and talk to us.
We just did our invitations. Didn't you know that?
[laughing]
Most people might not think they're invitations, but anyway. Good evening, Mayor Schroeder, council members, guests in the audience. Mr. Petrie, the interim chief appraiser wishes me to convey his apologies for not being able to be here and attend tonight's meeting due to his conflicting schedules. Mr. Petrie and I have been meeting with various taxing authority boards as an introduction of the new chief appraiser for Bastrop Central Appraisal District that's effective August 1st. On behalf of Mr. Petrie, he wishes me to thank you for the working relationship that has been developed while serving as the interim chief appraiser these past four years. The Board of Directors made the decision in April to move forward and have appointed me, you're standing before you, as your next chief appraiser for Bastrop County. I have been employed with Bastrop for four years and bring 30-plus years of experience in the valuation of property tax, property for tax purposes. I am a registered professional appraiser with the Texas Department of Licensing and Regulation, and I also hold a professional certified general appraisal license with the Texas Appraisers Licensing and Certification Board. And now, I did pick up a little bit early on between Mayor Schroeder and Mr. Ennis, UT, both UT?
Issue is with Mayor Pro Tem Nelson.
Okay, well, I just, oh, okay. Well, I just have to do a little plug here, just because I'm a proud mama. And my daughter received her PhD this spring in applied linguistics and emphasis in German at UT.
Yay!
Yay. So anyway, just had to, just had to throw that out there. We love being in the area. My husband and I, we love Bastrop, and we are excited to be a part of the community and become even more active. But moving on to the reason that we're here tonight, we, I am here tonight, is to talk about the appraisal district values and the activities that we're going through. The local property tax system has three main components. And tonight, I would like to briefly speak to you on each of these. Number one, with the appraisal district and our responsibility, it is my vision to nourish the seeds that Mr. Petrie has planted to ensure that the appraisal district's role of discovery, listing, and valuing property for each year, as well as administrating the exemptions, is handled efficiently. Our appraisers are currently working in the field with iPads now. That means their collection in the field is immediate, and it's available to our system within minutes. This is great. It's cut down. We don't have data entry now. We don't have those errors occurring with two different people having to touch the property's information. We are excited, too, that in the fall here, we will be implementing new technology called distal measuring for our appraisers. This is going to allow them to appraise structures without having to hang a tape measure. The second item I wish to speak on is the taxing jurisdictions. You, the city of Bastrop, I want to ensure that the certification of values to the taxing jurisdictions, like the city of Bastrop, is complete and accurate as possible, as these figures assist in setting the property tax rates according to your budgets. So it is vital that all new value is accounted for. We are excited that for 2020, we will have aerial imagery available to assist with inaccessible properties and the growth that Bastrop is experiencing. Our flights will start this fall, and we hope to be able to share this information with all the taxing jurisdictions, so that they too can utilize updated imagery. And we hope to, in January sometime, get those entities together with our vendor, so that they can see the different aspects that they might be able to use our aerial imageries and maybe enhance for either emergency preparedness, the fire department, keeping track of fire destruction, police reports, and all that they need, but we would not have access to, because we don't need to know that. So we're excited for that to happen. The third item that's important with taxing is the property owner. And I want to ensure that the property owner knows that the appraisal district is available to listen to their concerns on value, and that we recognize that they have an expectation that the taxing process will be fairly administered. Tonight, though, I have given you the preliminary values for the city of Bastrop, I believe, and passed those out to you, and you each have those. Based on the values for the 2018 taxable value, as of the last supplement, the city was at 1 million, I'm sorry, $1 billion plus some change. The 2019 taxable value as of June 10th is $1,137,746,556. That's up 13.18 percent. Of that percent that's represented in the increase, 22 million of that is new value to the rolls. That's value that has not been on the tax roll in either new construction or structures that we have found that have not been on the tax roll. We began our hearing informal, hearing appeal process on April 25th. As of yesterday, we have logged in 4,019 appeals, and we have held informally 1,954 of these. Of those, we have settled 1,722 informally, meeting one-on-one with an appraiser. So we're getting about 88 percent resolved. And that's our, we would like that number to be higher. I would like to see that at about 95 percent, where property owners can come in, sit down, have a conversation with the appraiser, and we can try to resolve the value issue, if at all possible, because we have to be at market value. The law requires that. So we have to do everything we can. The mission of the Bastrop Central Appraisal District is to develop accurate, equal, and uniform appraisals for the use in property taxation assessment. We want to do this in the most efficient manner possible, while providing excellent customer service for all our constituents. We encourage property owners who do not feel that the value of their property represents market value to file a timely appeal and have an informal conversation with one of our appraisers to determine if a resolution can be met. At this time, I wish to thank you for the opportunity to present these numbers to the board and to give a little brief activities that's going on. And I also wish to thank each of you for your service to the community in the role that you play in the city of Bastrop. And I do look forward to working with you in the future here.
Thank you so much, Ms. Collins. Do you have a, when are you trying to have the rest of them done? What's your goal, to have all the hearings?
Hearings, so 95 percent of the tax roll, or the valuation roll, has to be heard by certification, which is in July.
Okay.
The end of July. Right now, it's looking like we might be able to finish up mid-July. Right now, it's looking like we might be able to finish up mid-July, so we're hoping to have them all resolved and taken care of by the second or third week in July.
Our finance person's doing a happy dance, because of course, as soon as she gets that number, it makes a lot of other things happen. Really appreciate the dedication of your team and work, and thank you for presenting tonight. Council, do you have any questions for Ms. Collins? Best of luck in your new position.
Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you very much. All right, council, we're moving on to page two, and we're on item 4E, a joint proclamation of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, and Bastrop County Commissioners Court recognizing and celebrating June 15th. I've got a proclamation that I'm going to read through quickly, and on Saturday, Mayor Pro Tem Nelson has said that he will be at the event to represent me, and Judge Poppy is planning on reading the proclamation, but I'll give you a quick overview. Whereas, the emancipation proclamation was signed into law by President Abraham Lincoln on January 1st, 1863, and whereas Texans did not receive word of the proclamation until June 19th, 1865, when Major General Jordan Granger sailed into Galveston Island and issued a general order declaring that, in accordance and with proclamation from the Executive of the United States, "All slaves are free." This year marks the 156th anniversary of the law. Juneteenth, also known as Freedom Day or Emancipation Day, is an annual holiday originating in Texas but celebrated in over thirty-five states and the District of Columbia. In 1979, Texas State Representative Al Edwards sponsored House Bill 1016 in the legislature, which was signed by Texas Governor Bill Clements, making Juneteenth an official state holiday in the state of Texas. The Bastrop Juneteenth Committee is celebrating its 32nd anniversary as an organization officially celebrating the event. On Saturday, June 15th, there'll be the grand parade with Cedric Benson, former UT star running back, serving as the parade marshal, the Blue Flame Cruisers Car and Motorcycle Show at the Convention Center, and a variety of family and school reunions that will be held throughout the city, and the ever-popular Free Street Dance in downtown. The Bastrop Juneteenth Committee, in partnership with the city of Bastrop, cur community center board, the Blue Flame Cruisers, and numerous other sponsors and organizations and individuals who make this an annual success. Therefore, be it resolved, the Bastrop City Council joins the Bastrop County Commissioners Court in recognition and celebration of their 32nd Juneteenth anniversary on the 15th day of June 2019. Let's give that organization a round of applause. All right, with that, we are moving on to item 5A, review noise as a nuisance, part of the ordinance update. Chief Alkelt?
Chief?
Good evening, mayor, council, city manager. On May 14th, we had an overview presentation of what we talked about as far as information that we're looking at and rebounding our city ordinances, and during that time, we identified different things, ordinances that would deal to public safety, community values, sound, light, odor, vibrations, and named some of them. Today, I'm going to give you an update on sound, and when we talked about it on May 14th, we identified some of the sounds could be from animals, construction hours, motor vehicles, speakers, motor vehicle exhaust systems, as well as the noon siren. Also, from the previous presentation, remember that we spoke about that, some of our ordinances are redundant because they're covered in Texas law. Well, the primary law that covers sound in Texas is under Chapter 42, which is disorderly conduct, and is Section 42.01, and it says, "A person commits an offense if he intentionally and knowingly makes an unreasonable noise in public place, other than on sports shooting range, or in a near or private residence that he has no right to occupy." So when we look at that, the problem with this is what is unreasonable? And while the Pino Code has lots of definitions about a lot of things, unreasonable is not one of those definitions. So it leaves it to be somewhat subjective when we look to apply that. Some other laws that are already codified and something other than our ordinances in the Texas Transportation Code, talks about unnecessary use of a horn. It says, "A motor vehicle operator shall use a horn to provide audible warning only when necessary to ensure safe operation. A warning device, including a horn, cannot emit an unreasonably loud or harsh sound or whistle." So if you're using your horn for anything other than to warn people of impending collision, it's a violation. In our statute, or in our Code of Ordinances under 8.06, we talk about noise, and we have our own unique set of hours. And daytime in our ordinance right now is defined as the period of time from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. on the same day. Well, with the change of seasons and with daylight savings time, they're oftentimes at 7:00 a.m., then it may be pitch dark, or it already may have been light for quite some time. So while we're going this, I'd like the council to consider possibly changing our daytime and making it consistent with state law for traffic code and for hunting, which is a period of time, one-half hour before sunrise to one-half hour after sunset. That way, it doesn't matter what time of the year we're in, those laws would be applicable, and when we talk about different decimal meters for daytime and nighttime, it becomes consistent with what you see outside, also on what's happening in the environment. In our section, we talk about permissible sound, and the way that we're managing that right now is it just basically says that no person shall conduct, permit, or allow an activity or sound source to produce a sound that is discernible beyond the property line. So that's the key thing, is not from my property, but where it's being heard from. We're using a decimal leader, and we have a time for residential and non-residential, they're both the same, but I guess we split it out in case we wanted to change it at a later date. And for daytime, we can't exceed eighty-five decimals, and at nighttime, it can't be more than eighty decimals. Our code also covers noisy vehicles, talks about the use of an automobile, motorcycle, or other vehicle, so out of repair, or loaded, or in such a manner to create a loud and unreasonable grating, grinding, rattling, or any other loud or unreasonable sound, is hereby prohibited and declared to be unlawful. So now we go back to some more subjectivity, what's unreasonable, how are we going to do that, and how are we going to articulate that in court? We talk about amplified sound, so we have some complaints right now about sound that vehicles are coming down in their music systems and things like that. And basically, the way our ordinance talks about is if you can hear from a distance of thirty-five feet, the sound is unreasonable and is a violation of our ordinance. There are some exceptions to that, and of course, that's going to be sounds coming from law enforcement vehicles, emergency vehicles, motor vehicles that are used for business or political purposes, and the horn or a warning device. Then we have various defenses throughout our ordinance right now that allows sounds to take place, and those, of course, make sense where we're alerting people of an existence or impending emergency danger, or an attempted crime or authorized test or drill for an emergency danger or attempted crime. Any sound that's produced by an emergency vehicle is, of course, a defense. It's produced by an emergency or regularly scheduled work necessary to restore public utilities, to restore property to a safe condition, to protect persons or property from imminent danger, and to collect garbage or to clean city streets or the street sweep. Defenses continue would be also from a lawfully scheduled stadium event, during a permitted parade, a lawfully scheduled amphitheater event, and here's what I thought was pretty neat when I was reading, we're permitted for a historical battle reenactment, so if we ever choose to do that, the sound ordinance would not be, there'd be a defense to that. During special events, and then, of course, lawful activities which constitute protective speech under the First Amendment. Now, I'm not an attorney, normally I see some of those as exceptions, the difference between a defense and an exception are that when it's an exception, the law doesn't apply. When it's a defense, it could technically go to court and you'd have to prove that at the time of trial. So I would think that maybe we might give some consideration if we, when we recodify this and do this, at emergency vehicles and things like that, we make those exceptions, and for other things, we make a defense so that if someone was so inclined, we wouldn't be wasting the court's time by filing things that obviously would, was never meant to be covered on the ordinance to begin with. Some other defenses are erection, excavation, construction, demolition, alteration, repair work that's taking place during the daytime hours, and that don't exceed a decimal level of ninety-five decimals. So that goes past the eighty-five daytime, one of these specific acts that are done and fought here in this section. Sound produced by an aircraft in flight is a defense. The sound operating a mechanical power saw, a drill, a sander, a router, a grinder during the daytime is a defense. And the sound was generalized as an, under an authorized permit issued for an outdoor sound application equipment. Another defense would be for the operation of an air conditioning unit, and I guess this is for apartments, so when we're so close within the distance of fifteen feet from the wall and things, and it's in the summer, there's an allowance for the decimal leaders for that, for air conditioning units. And then we have church bells, chimes, and other religious activities that take place as long as it does not exceed five continuous minutes. The other thing that comes back in here is the noon siren. We took two decimal meetings to let you know what the siren does, and standing underneath it, because right away, there are businesses and people that are actually at the apartment complex, one reading was one hundred and sixteen, and the other one was one hundred and twenty-two. So if we want to keep the noon siren in for that, then I strongly suggest that we make that an exception, and/or if there's a way that we can reduce the, how loud or how intense the siren is, that's also an option, but I thought, we talked about that, I know there's people that have desires to keep that, but I want to.
How long is the noon siren?
Oh, wow, that's a great question, mayor.
My own second.
Thank you, Chief.
Twelve seconds.
Just wanted to put it in perspective.
All right, sounds good. So the method of sound measurement, we use a, we use a decimal reader. If the council chooses to direct and say that that's how we're going to continue to enforce sound, or a majority of our sound, then right now, the police department has one, they're not very expensive. I'll also tell you that we don't really take a lot of calls for loud sound in the evening, so we haven't had a need yet to have more than one, but equipping our vehicles with one would be, would be a negligible cost. Permitted use for outdoor sound applications, so as we identified earlier, it's under a special event permit, and then there's some, there's some provisions that go in there. It's valid for a fourteen-day period from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and then if it's in a city park, you can have an extended time without it's in a city park. Also talks about that one, that the permits will not be issued, and that's more than twice during a thirty-day period, except for a city park, and then you get three permits in a thirty-day period. I'm not aware of any permits for sound being issued that were not tied to a special event in the last two years, and do you remember any whatsoever for sound permits that weren't in conjunction with it? Yes, so it's not a common occurrence, but the provisions are there, they're turned up to be there. When we talk about outdoor sound application, once again, it's not allowed to exceed eighty-five decimals, and no sound equipment between 10:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m., unless it's on a special permit and we have a variance. And the last thing is engine braking. The use of engine braking, the sound that that takes place is not permitted, that's our ordinance, so you can't use an engine brake in the city limits of Bastrop, that's common in many, many cities throughout the state of Texas because of the wonderful sounds that those generate. So I wanted to give you a range on what our ordinances look like and see what type of guidance that y'all wanted to give, or any direction that you wanted to give, but I also wanted to give you some information from some of the cities around on what they're doing right now. So the city of Austin says that from 10:00 p.m. at night to 10:00 a.m. beyond the property line, they can't exceed seventy-five decimals. So ours at nighttime is eighty, they're at seventy-five, and thirty feet from a vehicle. If it's in a commercial area, it's from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., and they have eighty-five decimals. Georgetown, their daytime is sixty-three, and residential in fifty-six at nighttime, and in commercial at seventy to sixty-three, and then they also have an industrial district for seventy-two and sixty-five, and their vehicle distance is thirty. Round Rock for residential is between fifty-five and fifty, for commercial, it's eighty at night, our daytime is seventy-five at night, they also have an industrial, which is also eighty and seventy-five. Sunset Valley, the city of Shirts, and the city of Westlake, they have the generic where you're not going to disturb the quiet, comfort, or peace of the people that are in the neighborhood, and that's just how, that's how they roll, that's the wording that they're using. Fort Worth is at seventy decimals at daytime and sixty at night for residential, eighty for commercial and seventy at nighttime, and then their industrial is eighty and seventy also. And then Rowlett, the city of Rowlett has, for residential, a daytime sixty-five, a nighttime is sixty, when they go to commercial, it's eighty-five and eighty-five, and industrial is eighty-five and eighty-five, and their distance from vehicles is fifty feet. So we fall somewhere in the middle on some, some a little bit on the upper words, but once again, those are all things that are subject to change or discussion, and that's why we're having this discussion this evening. Some available for any questions or direction?
Mayor and council, to put this into perspective, there's several schools of thought, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, comes to mind. The other is if you would like to change the parameters, clearly, there's a difference of as much as thirty to forty decimal points, which is a pretty significant swing, so if you're interested in making some adjustments, it would be helpful, perhaps, that you don't get to a specific decimal level, but you provide some direction on what it is you're trying to fix, or where you'd like to land so that staff have some perspective on where to go to do something.
Thank you, city manager, councilmember Ennis.
Thank you, mayor. There are two things I'd like to question you, chief, one, or one a question, the other one is request. Do we still use the siren for notification of some kind of weather emergency? We used to do that.
No, sir, the only thing that we use the siren for now is for noon time, sir.
For noon?
Yes.
Okay. That answers that question. I'd like to see us take out the five continuous minutes on the, on the church bells, because there have been several times in my tenure of living in Bastrop where we have tolled the bells all over town, memorials to 9/11, several other national observations, and it's gone on for a lot longer than five minutes, and I don't see, think there's a church in town that wants to, wants to irritate residents by ringing its church bells too long. So I think that five continuous minutes thing needs to be taken out.
Yes, sir.
My personal feeling.
Council, any other, Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
You know, while I agree with the, or concur with the thought of making it consistent with state law, I just, I'm concerned at the subjectivity of having it thirty minutes before, what is it, thirty minutes, a half hour before sunrise and one half hour after sunset seems somewhat subjective, but depended on who is viewing the sunrise and/or sunset.
There is a posted website that you can go to that the state publishes that will tell you based on the day what the sunrise and sunset is, and you can work thirty minutes before and after from that, so it isn't subjective.
Will that take care of that?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Roger?
My question about your decimals, and I understand you didn't want certain numbers, I just think that since we have, right now, we have eighty to eighty-five in the evening, just maybe something a little bit different than just five decimal points, I don't think that's going to be very much difference between what you, what you allow during the day and then what you allow in the evening, maybe just let that separation be a little bit wider than five decimal points.
Right. One of the reasons that they have the separation is that nighttime sound carries much further and is louder.
Oh, no, I was saying, I think we need a bigger, I think we need a wider.
No, I understand, absolutely.
That's all I was saying.
So, chief, you gave us some really good information, it'd be great if you could email that to us so we could look at that when we're thinking about it, because that was a lot to take some notes, so I would like a copy of what you were reading off to us. And I also think we should do special consideration to construction equipment, because when construction equipment starts before sunrise, the phone calls equally start before sunrise. Received some of those phone calls when I used to be in the business, so I think we ought to, and as soon as, if they, if they can work thirty minutes before, then they're going to be firing up equipment before that, so you just, you can get into a bad spot.
Typically, the way we would suggest doing that is that there are times when it's so hot, as you well know, pouring concrete in the morning is required, and that would typically be handled as a variance we would bring to y'all, so that y'all could make the decision, like on 71, for instance, that we could then notify the neighbors of the impact and all of that, but, so.
Just in general, because that, you're not going to pour concrete every single day that you're, that the project's going, so.
So you're saying thirty minutes before, or just a set time of when this night is going to start before seven o'clock in the morning?
Well, council can visit about that, I think that construction is one that you wouldn't do thirty minutes before, maybe you can start at sunrise, and sunrise is going to be, it can vary, but when that equipment fires up close to a residence and it's dark outside, the phone starts ringing, and I don't blame them, so. There's always exceptions, but just as a general rule of thumb, that would be something I would like us to consider. Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Would it be reasonable to consider different standards, and it's almost frightens me to say so, different standards for our defined character districts that we're considering, such as neighborhoods may have a different standard than an area that is, has more commercial applications? That's something that we may want to consider, I think it's something that we should.
For the areas with the employment centers like the Bluff, Cattlemen's District, yes, sir, there would be some areas where, from a business perspective, and part of the intent of that code is to appropriately buffer and transition that use, so that would be some great areas to make those distinctions. I appreciate the direction, Councilmember Rogers, about spanning the difference between daylight and dark, and that's helpful, so when we put together the metrics we'll send you, we can put together a chart and see if there is some areas of best practices, if you will, that we could find from a sound standpoint that help guide that.
Good job, chief. All right, we're moving on to item 5B, provide an update on the chicken relocation project. Chief Alkelt?
Yes, good evening, again. So, I'm giving you an update since May 28th of 2019. Results, we had two activities on June 6th and June 7th, we did both of them in the mornings, after the new ordinance had been passed and had been published in the newspaper, and I'm happy to report that the two properties that we contacted and asked permission to come on, after understanding what the harboring definition had been changed to, both consented and allowed us to come on to the property. So the act from, the cumulative total from our activities on Thursday morning and last Friday morning was, twelve chickens have been, were safely captured and relocated. To date, that brings us two hundred, a total, a grand total of two hundred and fifty, city manager, that's ninety-one hens, sixty-six chicks, seventy-eight roosters, and fifteen eggs. What we found, though, is the ones that, the chickens that are left behind now are smarter than the average bear. They're, they're... The pickings are scarce, they roost quickly in trees and high in trees, and so it's getting tougher and tougher to catch those, which makes me happy, because it's also tougher and tougher to find them. So we're going to continue the same intensity for the remainder of June, and then what I would like to do is scale back until we see more coming. That doesn't mean we're not going to look for them, we're just not going to have the same intensity of manpower going, because we want to continue to capture the roosters. We realize if we can safely relocate the roosters, then our problem diminishes significantly. Until we're able to do that, we need to find eggs and chicks and not let our population increase again. But right now, like I said, we're spending some significant man-hours and man-time, and if you, if I go back to the chart and will look, when we kicked this off in full speed, we were able to net 77 in April, and that's because there was quite a bit, there was a lot. And now, in May, with the same intensity in the two workdays, we were able to take 21, and we're happy about that. But as you see, June may still be a month that we can surpass May, but there's just not as many, and they're much more savvy, if you will.
My husband and I rode around downtown for hours this weekend, and I never saw one. For those of you that live down there, are you seeing a significant reduction that would merit being okay scaling this back in July? Again, we're not going to do away with it, but we're spending a lot of resources and not netting the same result.
I'm seeing, I'm seeing the definite reduction. I'm just concerned that those little dudes start procreating, and we're right back to where we were if we lay off too long, but, you know, I think we can judge that, we'll see it when we have a bunch of little chicks running around that we're losing out.
From an internal perspective, what the chief and I have discussed is that Amy, our animal control officer, will dictate that. She rides through downtown daily, and if she sees an uptick, she would tell the chief, and that would activate something, so to your point, we won't let it get out of hand. But there won't be a standing use of overtime and having chicken rallies and all of the things, wranglers, wranglings, whatever y'all call them, on the schedule that we have had. So we will continue to be proactive, we'll just do it on an as-needed basis, rather than having it calendared.
It would help if I get phone calls, which I do on a regular basis, if I could pass them off to you, Chief.
Always, sir. Yes, sir.
And tell them where we are, not that I try, I'm not trying to answer them, but I don't have the most up-to-date info.
Yes, please, sir.
Thank you.
All right, just, actually, letting it ease enough for a month or so might get the chickens that are being hard to catch, let their guard down, they might actually be easier to catch in a month.
I am sure that Councilmember Rogers will be happy that we don't get a report every meeting.
It's also important to note that the, there was a bill that was proposed that said throughout the state of Texas, you could have six chickens in a coop in your backyard, and that bill did not pass. So that is not a bill, that is not the deal, and that doesn't mean that we don't have an ordinance, but the state law that was passed did not, state law that was proposed did not pass.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is that enough for chickens today? All righty, moving on to citizens' comments, I have one person signed up for citizens' comments, Doc Jackson. If you please state your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman, and City Manager. I'm Doc Jackson at 163 Tahitian Drive here in Bastrop. I just wanted to state that I wanted to commend the staff for the act of God recovery efforts that they placed in trying to take the brush and all the things up. However, I have gotten several calls from citizens that are concerned because of the upcoming Juneteenth celebration this weekend, and they were wondering if there could be some way that along the parade route and in the Kerr area and Martin Luther King, if we could kind of maybe expedite some of that, because we will have a lot of people in town, and they felt it was kind of slightly. And I, as I said, applaud the effort that's happened so far, but they were wondering about trying to help get some of that done. Also, they considered it a fire hazard, because some of the brush, of course, before today's rain, had, it's pretty dry, and if someone just threw a cigarette butt or something, I was told, that it could be a tinderbox, and so I'm just passing that on from the citizens, and, but I'm very pleased, you know, I was completely shocked when I got out downtown and saw all of the debris. I didn't have any, didn't have any, knock on wood, I didn't have any problems like that in my neighborhood, but yet and still, when I came downtown, I did witness a lot of that, and it's considerably better than it was. So that's my report from the citizens to call me.
I know we wouldn't normally do this, Mayor, but I mentioned emergency management and brush, and I can address Mr. Jackson's concern. Trey Jobe is already working with our contractor to work the parade route.
Okay, great.
So that the folks that are standing on the parade route don't have to engage with the brush, and so he's already worked that, and we're working with him diligently by Saturday to have that addressed.
Excellent, thank you, thank you, Mr. Jackson. All right, we're moving on to the consent agenda. As I said, we will be pulling 8B, so the only consent agenda item is 8A, consider action to approve city council minutes from the May 28th, 2019 regular meeting and the May 29th, 2019 special meeting.
Move to approve.
Second. I have a motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tim Nelson, a second from Councilmember Jones. Is there any discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
The motion carries with a 4-0. We're moving on to item 8B, consider action to approve the second reading of resolution number R 2019-54 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas approving the executive director or interim executive director of the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation to obtain a loan in the amount of $1,800,000 for the construction of a building to the lot at 921 Main Street, repealing all resolutions in conflict, providing for separability and providing an effective date. Ms. Davis, did you have any further comments that you wanted to make?
Yes.
Come on it.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. We are here tonight to request the council's second reading on resolution R 2019-54 approving a request by the Bastrop EDC to obtain a loan in the amount of $1.8 million for construction of a building at 921 Main Street. One detail I would like to bring to your attention is that the $1.8 million does include the cost of the tenant's finish-out, which was not directly addressed at the last city council meeting. Thank you for your consideration, and BEDC Board Chair Catherine Nash and I are here to answer any questions you may have.
Council, do you have any questions for Ms. Davis or Ms. Nash? Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
I do. This 1.8, it also includes site development and site mitigation, cleaning up some of the debris and remains from the buildings that burnt down, am I correct?
Yes.
I just, I wanted to make sure.
That's correct.
I just wanted to make sure the public understands it's not just for the building, it's for site preparation also.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Davis or Ms. Nash? Councilmember Ennis?
Along those lines, the mitigation on the, I know we've done, or y'all have done a lot of work on the walls of the adjoining buildings. In the design of the new building, it also confirms that that will be mitigated even further, right?
That's correct.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I have two people signed up to speak, Doc Jackson, Ms. Davis, if you'll just take a seat in case we have any further questions. Mr. Jackson?
Good evening, again, I'm Doc Jackson, 163 Tahitian Drive here in Bastrop, and I rise to oppose the situation at 921 Main Street after listening to the different citizens that came in last weekend, the many people that have contacted me about the construction of the building for $1.8 million. I'm sure there are several things that I don't know about, because I've not been privy to the information, things that you all know as to why you unanimously voted on the resolution, but not knowing those things, I am in opposition to it, along with several citizens in the community. And again, I'm the messenger, as well as speaking for me personally, I am opposed to the funding of such an issue because of the cost and because of the uncertainty of what's going to happen with the building, or the other things that I am not privy to at this point, so I just wanted to put that in public record. Thank you. And also, previously, when I was working with the Main Street program and on the board with the Main Street, we had the project that we considered working also with the Downtown Business Alliance that worked well with the downtown businesses and with, you know, using the venue for other purposes, which were very successful, we thought, and I just would like to see that happen, and I've always been in favor of that versus the building situation. So thank you for your consideration. I know there are instances, and there's information, as I said, that I'm not aware of, and perhaps later on, I mean, I will be, I'll reverse my decision, but as of right now, as a citizen and not knowing all of that other information, I adamantly oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Richard Smarsnick? You'll give us your name and your address?
Richard Smarsnick, 925 Main Street, Bastrop, Texas. Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager. The park idea for 921 Main Street has been studied, reviewed, and received all the due consideration it deserves. The Texas Historic Commission analyzed the best use for 921 Main Street and recommended a multi-story building best suited the open space. The BEDC also analyzed the best use and surveyed citizens, and again concluded the open space was best served by a multi-story building. The decision has been made to move forward with the building and building a multi-story structure. This moves downtown forward, ultimately adds a vacant lot to the tax rolls and solves a gap in downtown. 921 Main Street will be a great addition to downtown and will drive economic development for downtown Bastrop. Let's get started.
Thank you, Mr. Smarsnick.
Thank you.
All right, Council, do you have any other comments or questions for Ms. Davis or Ms. Nash? Councilmember Jones?
I too was opposed to the building until I heard the details, and I have to realize that my yes vote on that probably cost me my seat, but I felt like it was really important to vote for the city versus my own personal gain, and so, I mean, I just wanted to say that I think that there's information that is going to be very exciting for the public as they learn it, and, but I wanted to say that I did share your opinion before I knew that, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. Any further comments? I move to approve. A motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers, and a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes. Motion carries 4-0. The second reading is approved, and resolution R 2019-54 is approved. All right, we're moving to page three, otherwise known as the last page of the agenda, and I know I've got some consultants, and I told you I was going to take 9B last, but I would like to start with 9C, and, well, I got, I guess somebody's here for all of them, so it doesn't really matter. All right, so we'll start with 9A. Consider action to approve resolution number R 2018-52 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas awarding a contract in the amount of $341,000 to ASD consultants to undertake the work identified for the remodel of City Hall, attested as Exhibit A, authorizing the City Manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause, and establishing an effective date. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The current City Hall building that we're in was built in 2010, and it had some unfinished space, it was not completed for future expansion. With our growth in services and our growth in staff recently, we determined, you know, the budget year was time to fill that space in, build it out, which will include some HPAC work, renovations to the planning area, and some renovations to the City Manager slash receptionist area to make better utilization of that space. There's a lot of empty space there, we're going to make it into multiple offices, and it'll be a better use. You can just see up here, we'll do some work to the planning department, they'll actually add a conference room that's much needed, we're constantly looking for a place to meet, and we'll get back the conference room that we lost when people started filling in the offices here, so with that, I'll take any questions you have, and if I don't know the answer, Mr. Jason George is back here, and I'm sure he can answer it for us.
Councilmember Ennis?
Where's the reception desk in?
So you can currently see, this is how it's set up now, but this is the empty workroom, that will become another office, and then there'll be a workroom space right there with the copier. Currently, this is all used as workroom space, and it's huge.
His question is, where was the receptionist? It's in the top left corner.
I'm trying to get a.
That's still there. This is the receptionist where Miss Baby Ruth sits, right there. This is Tracy's office.
Okay.
This is Ann's office. That workroom will be turned in better utilized.
One of the things that has happened with technology that's funny in every city hall I've ever been in, we used to produce paper copies of council packets, P and Z packets, so you needed all this big, long cabinet space, so you needed copiers, and you needed all the storage for the copy papers. Well, we just don't do that anymore. So part of our challenge is, we've got this huge workroom that could be two offices, but we store stuff in it. So we've got to re-channel the office space to use the technology that we have afforded to us instead of just storing stuff.
And you can appreciate that the average office space, I think, on this side of the building was a little over 200 square feet, now it'll be somewhere between 100 to 120. So we'll get more offices using the same space and taking care of that unfinished space.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Mr. Jobe, why is there such a difference between what the estimated cost is going to be and what the low bid was? I mean, that's like a 14% increase.
That is a question I'm going to pass on to our consultant, because I'm sure it's market-driven, but he would likely know the answer.
Have an idea for there, Mr. George?
Council, Mayor, and City Manager, Jason George with Negretza and Cole Architects. Unfortunately, I didn't put together the budget or the estimate, that was my boss, but from the explanation that he gave me, is that.
Mr. George, don't throw your boss under the bus.
Oh. The explanation he gave me is about the increase in construction costs just in the recent, recent times, recent years, just in this area of Texas, just the influx of so many projects, so many people moving here. It caused the construction costs for projects, especially further out from the Austin area, to increase because of just transportation costs and the amount of work that's available right now. So it would push these costs higher.
Was that your only question, Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
That was the only question relative to that.
With respect to the bid, I'm interested in, from reviewing the documents, it looks like you had five bidders that bid on April 23rd, but your letter to Mr. Jobe wasn't until May 20th. Was there a problem with the bids? Why did it take so long?
No, there was no problem with the bids. We had five bids.
It was called financing.
Yeah.
We had to process and figure out how we were going to pay for it, because it surprised us and was greater than the budget that we had.
Yeah, but he didn't do the financing. I would have thought he would have sent you a letter that said, these are the bid results.
So first, he sent us something and said, would you like to revise the scope and make it smaller? Then I met with Linda, Tracy, and you'll see it in the budget amendment coming up when Tracy gets out tonight. We realized there was a shortfall in what needed to be there, so we dug around to see where we could find the money.
Yeah, so specifically, what I'm concerned about is that they bid something on April 23rd, we're talking about it on June 11th, is the bid even still good?
Yes, the bid is.
Until June 22nd.
So you need to repeat that, because no one at home heard what you said.
I'm sorry, it's good until June 22nd.
June 22nd.
So it's still good.
I'm going to put Alan on the spot, Alan Munger with Walker Partners. You're going to essentially say the same thing on Old Austin Highway, and that is that there's so much work going on in the Austin area that it is a question of supply and demand, and that's also what's driving the bid on Old Austin Highway.
Well, that's a really different project, so I want to talk about that one when we get to that item.
Okay. But I just want to say that what you're going to see is, is that we've got some market demand issues that are impacting all of our projects, just due to a function of the amount of work available and the fewer contractors that are there.
I see, and the five bidders going from 341 to 585,000, that's a pretty good span, but not an unreasonable span, but you did answer my question. I was just concerned that back in the days when I was bidding work, if I bid it in April 23rd. concerned that back in the days when I was bidding work, if I bid it in April 23rd, I'm, I'm expecting to start well before June 11th, council talking about it. And I understand we had to find the money. I just wanted to make sure that you were confident that they're still willing to stand behind the bid and the commitment of time.
Yeah. Yeah, I can say that's, that's not his fault. We were looking for the money, and I knew we had till the 22nd.
And I didn't find the engineer's estimate. In fact, I thought y'all had just made a budget assumption, and there wasn't an engineer's probable cost.
That's correct.
See, that's what your boss was saying. Okay. All right, Councilmember Rogers?
I think you just answered, but I didn't quite understand. So, where'd we get the original budget number?
So.
I pulled it out of the air.
Oh, okay. Just curious why it's so off.
She said, "It can't be that much," and she put in what she hoped it would be.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
From a quality standpoint, I also noticed that our lowest bidder also had the shortest construction time in there, about 12 weeks. Should we worry about quality? If that's the case, is it going to be a rush job or?
I don't think so. We asked for a schedule that was as short as possible, and everybody had the opportunity to, I think they're going to have the right appropriate amount of staff so they can work on it in phases, and that's what they laid out in their bid.
There was quite a bit of range in there from 12 to 20 weeks, and that's just, that's from a quality standpoint. I wanted to ask that question.
Correct. No, that's right.
Well, the number two bidder was at 13 weeks and 383, so that's, their, their burn rate seems to be somewhat consistent. But that, that's, that's a good question. So, we're, y'all are pro, because we're going to count. You know that. We're going to count the number of weeks. So, you're saying that they're standing behind not only the amount that they're bidding, but their time schedule as well.
That is the first meeting we're going to have as soon as we approve this award.
Yes, ma'am, because part of the challenge is the timing of this, and they have to build so we can move so that they can work on.
It's a domino.
It is, and, and we've got to be able to manage it. And there's some critical time in here with budget. We can't move. So, one of the things that Trey and I talked about today is, is that we may provide some flexibility to the contractor. If he has us moving, the two weeks we're putting together of the budget for y'all, we can't move. So, it could be that the 12 weeks becomes 14 weeks, but that's at our request, not his, because depending on the schedule of when he starts, we have to be able to still operate the city and do what we need to do. So, there may be some tweaking to that.
Yeah, we need to clarify that, though, because if I'm a contractor, you're telling me to back off and come back, and I'm going to tell you that's a change order, because that is not how the project was bid. So, if it's a change order, then, then you have to come back to us and regroup. And please don't wait six months to come back and say, "Well, we decided," and there was a change order.
No, that's right. So, we'll plan to phase, they will start in the unfinished space, because that's the easiest place to start. If they can do something over a weekend, for example, like put up a wall for the planning department, then we'll, we'll have someone here over the weekend so they can get that done. That's kind of the, the plan.
Well, I'll say, from my perspective, and, and council can make comments, I trust you guys, not trying to micromanage you guys, but I'm saying council's looking at a 341, so we.
That's right.
We need you to come back if, if there are extenuating circumstances that we're not aware of tonight that drive up that price.
We definitely will.
Councilmember Ennis?
For the folks at home, when do you look at starting?
Once we award, I'd like to do a pre-construction in the next week. We'll have to talk to Mr. George again, but I think that's fairly doable.
So, once we, once we vote to approve this, if we do, then you're going to start?
I would hope by the first week or two of July.
Needs to be before the 22nd, or the bid's not valid.
Say what?
It has to be before June 22nd, or the bid's not valid, and that's 11 days from today.
Okay. Thanks.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
With the assurance of staff and our contracted architect, I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tim Nelson. And a second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion or questions? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
The motion carries four zero. Thank you, Mr. George. Thank you, Mr. Job. I'm going to, we're not going to do the budget one, which was 9B. We're going to skip over that, and I think we've got people here for the next three. I want to stick on construction. Sorry, Chris. So, we're going to go to 9D. Consider action to approve resolution number R-2019-56 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving the award of the contract with Angel Brothers Enterprises Limited in the amount of $1,2,719.70 for the reconstruction of Old Austin Highway, attached as Exhibit A, authorizing city manager to execute all necessary documents for the agreement, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Job?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, Old Austin Highway was part of year one in our original street maintenance project. But before we get started talking about that, I just wanted to point out the difference in the type of work that we'll be doing. You can see the project map there on the right. We're doing everything on Old Austin Highway, but we're injecting action emulsion, doing much more rehabilitation, and it should extend the road life about 25 years. Again, it was all part of year one, and you can see Old Austin Highway there in the black. We have some surface treatment in the blue, and we just have some crack seal in the green area. This is the map that we had in the budget. I just wanted to leave it up there for everybody to look at. But Old Austin Highway is one of the busiest streets in the City of Bastrop. It's a traffic count of anywhere from 3,000 to 4,000 cars a day. It's, it's, it's got a dangerously low score. Depending on the segment, it ranges anywhere from a 69 to about a 55. When you put the whole thing together, it's an average of about 60. So, what that means is there's certain spots that are a whole lot worse shape than others. It did come in over budget, and you'll see again in Tracy's budget amendment. I'm sure we'll talk about that here in a second. But what council's talking about with fiscal sustainability is wanting to make something, wanted to build the asset and build it right for the, to extend the life as much as possible. So, what I was going to say is, I'd like, well, I'll make a recommendation, absolutely. This is the job we do, but I want everybody to be sure they're aware. If you look in your staff report, the other streets that you see on here for year one and year two, we would have to find additional funding for those roads. So, everything on that list in your staff report, by making this decision tonight, is we are pushing the other, the maintenance on the other streets. I do think it's the right move, but I just want to make sure that everybody understands that before we get started.
Do you have a total for those other streets?
The total for year one, we were at 280,000. I do not have a total for year two. That was our O P C. I'm guessing that it's under what it should be.
So, I guess I'm going to ask the same question I asked before. Where'd we get the budget? Over budget, where'd we come up with the budget, what we thought it was going to cost us?
So, when we sold certificate of obligations in the summer, we sold enough for funding year one and year two. So, there is money for this. What Trey is saying is, is that we will not do all of the streets we thought we were going to do.
Oh, I understand that. I was asking, he was saying that Old Austin Highway is coming in above more than what we budgeted. Again, I'm asking, where did we come up with the budget?
We need to be specific about the words, because the budget's one thing, but what you're talking about is the engineer's opinion of probable cost.
That's right.
Was 721,000, and the bid came in at.
1,012,000.
At a little over a million, and now you can come talk to us about why.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you for clarifying that.
It's 40% over the engineer's opinion of probable cost. And I'm so old, we used to call it an engineer's estimate, and I have a feeling that we have a lawyer to think for why we now call it an opinion of probable cost.
Alan Munger, Walker Partners. Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't like being the low bidder with my O P C. It, that's not the first we've had in the firm here lately. Things are moving. Tech dot has numerous funds, sources of funds that they didn't have, one even two years ago. We haven't increased our contractor base that much. These guys have all the work they can handle. The weather this spring has slowed them down, and we've got a very tight timeframe. I think there were several items that kind of jumped out at me when I reviewed it. To use plain language, I think we're paying for the privilege to cut in line so we can get our work done before school starts, is what, was what our big goal was. They're putting other projects that they're already behind on off to the side a little bit. Positive side, I think we've got a great contractor. It's been my experience, if we threw these out and rebid them, we're not going to get lower prices. We'll probably get higher prices, and we would miss our schedule. I ran my numbers by Tom Scullion over at TTI. I said, "Tom, how do these look to you?" He said, "Your costs were fair." And all my costs, I, I put about a 10% over a Tech dot job, and they still blew me out of the water. So.
Okay.
We're doing night work. We've got, but the method of construction we're doing, it's, you know, we're minimizing the amount of trucks. It's a reclamation process. We're adding, we're pulverizing the road, then we're going to add asphalt and cement to it. So, we're working with materials that y'all have already paid for that are laying in the road. We're not bringing in a lot of new material. We're fortifying that underneath, and then we'll come back and overlay it and stripe it. That's, that's what I can add to. Y'all have any questions?
I have a couple of questions. For one thing, good job. Your bid was on June 4th. Your letter was sent on June 6th, and here we are, June 11th, talking about it. So, yay, that was good. My concern is, knowing that it was a time constraint for school starting, I would have preferred that we would have been talking about this in April or May so that they could have started the day school was out.
I would have liked that.
Can you comment on that?
I don't want to throw y'all under the bus.
Was it our fault?
We didn't, we didn't.
You can't talk till you get to the mic, because they want to hear you.
We actually signed contracts with them after October of this year, once the budget was allocated, and we were continually signing up engineers. So, we were probably a little late on the start. I would agree with that.
Because one of the things that, to me, and I agree, a couple of things. I believe more than two people picked up bids, bid packets. Is that correct?
Yes.
A lot more than two?
I saw six G Cs.
Okay.
We advertised in mid-May. We were fighting a holiday week the week before, and it was a Tech dot bid date as well, so.
We're lucky we even got two.
Yeah.
So, that's like the worst day to bid ever.
Yeah.
On a not very fun job.
Yeah. If I could do it, if I could do it again, we would have had a little more in our schedule to where we could have beaten the holiday.
Councilmember Ennis?
With all that being said, do you think you can finish by school time?
I, I do. The schedule they've, preliminary schedule they submitted, yes.
Do you have any leeway, or is it just going to be?
No, we've got about a week of leeway. We've got a week for weather.
Oh, okay.
And, and, and they were finishing a week early, so we've actually got two weeks of leeway.
And Councilmember Ennis, this is the engineer, not the contractor.
That's fine. I'm just, he's the only one I can answer.
Yeah, absolutely. I just want to make sure, because he's going to be saying, "But it wasn't my machi," you know, so I just want to make sure we're clear on who, who's answering the question.
Yeah. And that's why I'm here. If you award it, and I'll probably be calling those guys on the way home so we can get things going.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Mr. Job, you had said just parts of Old Austin Highway scored as low as 55, and some of them scored a little bit higher.
Correct.
I guess one of my concerns, if you can assuage my concerns as much as you can, is that we have five of those streets that scored lower than that average on Old Austin Highway. Are we exacerbating our problem by not addressing those roads at the same time because of the lack of funding?
We, so I went back and, and looked at those scores. There are some under. I do think we could do some crack seal if that's, we're, there's a small amount of money left in what we have in stock to do, to crack seal some of those roads, but you won't see a significant change in, you, you just won't see the, I guess you won't get the big change you were looking for. All those roads won't be done in one year, is my point. But yes, we can take care of some dangerous areas with our current maintenance budget.
Alan, would you come back to the mic, please?
Can I follow, I will follow up a little bit. From a construction standpoint, is it feasible, is it even feasible to consider, do you, working on a portion of the worst portions of Old Austin Highway and still take care of those other roads that scored lower, or is that just not feasible to do it from up?
I think it will cost you more money in the long run.
Okay. Good enough. Thank you.
There were some extenuating circumstances that could be mitigated if we waited a year.
That's where I am.
So, what is your perspective from an engineer if we just decide that we're not going to do Old Austin Highway this, this year, and we wait until next year, and we bid it at an appropriate cycle, and we figure out Tech dot's cycle, and we bid on a day that Tech dot's not anywhere in the area?
And not on a holiday weekend?
Yeah.
And the, the bigger deal was, is it because of the traffic count? Is that why we picked nighttime? And is there a possibility of doing a bid of, if they are allowed to work during the day, and a bid that they're not allowed to work during the day, to see how much of the tax dollar it would cost to be working at night?
I thought their production would be better at night. They can.
Good point.
Have less trucks. Globally, I'm concerned about when Tech dot's going to start on their big frontage road over, over the bridge. I'm afraid you're going to get some traffic off of 71 cutting through. I would need to talk to the area office, and I know that's.
It's a July let, so.
Okay.
I just have a hard time, because I learned some things tonight. It was a holiday weekend for the bid. It was during a Tech dot bid.
We were asked to that.
It's June 11th. I mean, that, because I know what, I would, you just start at, we're, we're paying for that, and that's tax dollars that's not going towards the, the road. It's, it's going to overhead, and I am not, I'm not saying anything against Angel Brothers or Aaron. It's, it's supply and demand.
Right.
I would, I would be doing the same thing. I understand that. I'm just not certain that we're truly giving the best bang for the buck for our citizens.
Yeah. And whenever you look in a crystal ball, I can't tell you if it's going to be better in the future or not.
But one thing that could be different if we did it next year is they could have more time to do the same amount of work.
Right. I mean, we, we could bid it in late April, and we would be starting June 1st.
The constraints that, that we have put on them operationally is just from past experience. We have two schools that use that, and so I believe that it's paramount that this happened when school is out. So, yes, they would have more time, but the constraint will still be there unless we want to really irritate everybody in town that have kids.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with that, but two weeks is, is significant when you're talking about a total of, of 12. So, Trey, I'm going to ask the question that Mayor Pro Tim Nelson asked you in a slightly different way. Couldn't, not that we would value engineer and let part of the bid and have them come back and do the rest of it, but couldn't city crews do some crack sealing and some things in the worst part of Austin, Old Austin Highway, and we could come back for the whole project next summer?
I don't want to overpromise here. So, so we currently have, and you'll see in this next bid, that's actually under, which I'm very excited about, so we don't have to have this discussion again.
I say that that's for last. Keep going.
But our, our in-house crews are actually going to go in and repair all of those roads in-house this year, and that's probably about all they can handle. I didn't, when we had that, when I thought about that originally, I don't know that we could get there and take care of Old Austin Highway in a timely manner that would be beneficial.
But you could put together a bid for the next year.
Yes, I could do that.
And we could, and we could spend the certificate of obligation that we've issued and get year two done in year one, right?
Yes.
I'm not sure if it's, Old Austin Highway, year one, year two? Is that how it's set up right now?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so we, you know what I'm saying? We could pull something forward and swap them out.
Yes, so Old Austin Highway, we knew was going to take more than year one allocation. So, we had taken part of year two and added to year one to make Old Austin Highway work.
Gotcha, okay.
So, there is not quite a full year that we would have to mitigate, knowing what the bid could potentially do, because I think Alan is right. The more work, and we saw, I saw this when I was in Dallas, when the runways at DFW were being poured, concrete was off the chart.
Right.
So, you know, there's always those mitigating factors. So, it would allow us to, to do some of this work this year and flip them, but we would, we would be very conservative in what we would commit to in order to make sure we had the money to do Old Austin Highway if the circumstances stayed the same.
But even if we're conservative, it would be more than nothing, which is what we would be at now. Councilmember Ennis?
Another consideration is, as I understand it, we're, we're in a El Nino weather pattern.
Yes, sir.
And we've been having a lot of rain. We have no idea how long this is going to continue and how much more we're going to get throughout the summer, so.
That's correct. And, and I will say, you're right, we've had quite a bit more rain, and I think Old Austin Highway has deteriorated even more since we've had that rain over the last two years since we started this. And it's not going to get any better. So, I don't, just throwing that out there.
I'm, I'm concerned about the rain and your timing, once again.
Right. And the level of maintenance that you're seeing on the other streets in year one is, is a less expensive maintenance. It's not that it's less important, but it won't, it will cover more streets, but it won't extend the life, and it's, you'll still end up being, doing some kind of. won't extend the life, and it's, you'll still end up being, doing some kind of reconstruction later on. It's just a hold-in pattern, if you will, for that three to five year.
Right, but we really are flipping when we do the work.
Right.
It's the work that we are planning to do already, as a part of the agreement.
That's correct.
I don't know which one of you was first, but Councilmember Rogers?
Well, I kinda like your ideas of flipping it, because, you know, I have had children in those two schools, and like Mr. Ennis says, a little bit of rain, you could be even further behind, and you're talking two weeks. Those teachers go into session a few weeks before school starts, so you're gonna even have more teachers in traffic and everything, you know, sports starting that a couple of weeks before school starts. So, if we can, I think maybe starting, like you're thinking, maybe flipping it so we can get an early start next year, might be a better idea.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Well, I don't wanna get lost in the conversation. Mr. Munger mentioned earlier that we delay it. He's not so sure we're gonna be able to secure that same, similar bid.
Similar bid, or, like I said, I'm not gonna guarantee for a contractor he can get it done, but I feel pretty sure these guys can make our schedule if we award it. Yeah. Whenever we go back out for bids again, I don't know who we'll get and what level of quality we'll get. We had two good contractors submit on this one. One was known to be high, they were the higher bid. I was, I was very pleased to get Angel Brothers. I wish we'd gotten a couple more, but.
Forty percent over the cost is, is, I think, why council's having this conversation. That is a significant change.
I agree, I agree.
All right, council, that's why we get the big bucks. Any other questions?
I suggest we flip it like we were talking and not do the, also, Old Austin Highway till week two of week one and two.
Year one and two.
Year one and two.
Okay, so, just to help with that, when we do, we'll, you'll have to put together a spec, and I don't have to go to bid again, so it won't happen immediately. While this work is already engineered and ready to go, the bid specs will have to go out for the maintenance work as well.
But we can do them on a timely basis.
Just so you know.
I think the issue is, is that you'll save forty percent even if you do all of it next year.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't, and I'm starting the next week.
And I wouldn't be adverse to if, it might be worth taking another couple of cores, too.
Yes.
Because we did have a conversation about the amount of rain that we've had, the cores may have come back with a little bit of a high PI, because one of the ways you can definitely take down the cost is if we're not having to do quite as much emulsion. And I know we want it to stand up, and I know it's gonna have a significant amount of traffic, but, you know, we just need to be spending the taxpayers' dollars as judiciously as we can.
Sure.
If they don't use the level of-
You gotta come to the mic. See, we did that in unison.
If they don't use the level of emulsion or cement, those will come back and change order to the good.
Right, I understand.
Okay.
But right now, they're doing it to the design, and we don't know if they're gonna be able to do that or not.
The contractor is going to do a design, a pavement design. My numbers were on the bad side. They shouldn't be above that.
When are they gonna have the design?
It's about two weeks for them to do. They can do it, they can do it quick. They'll have to just come get the materials. I took cores to get our depths. The material we're working in is good quality material, that was, that was the level of check that we did.
So, just for clarity, you're saying that they are working on a design, and they may come back with a cost savings if their design is lower than what you bid?
Yeah, they may come back, I have two percent submit and 4.8% emulsion, they might come back four or five emulsion, one and a quarter.
Can they come back and lower it forty percent of the total cost?
No, it won't.
Okay.
Is there any way that we can do a comparative cost benefit analysis on these different ideas and concepts? Are we gonna flip it? What's our cost benefit if we're gonna wait on the new design? What's the cost benefit as compared to what we're doing now?
Please, give me on the spot.
So, let me ask his question in a different way. How much of the forty percent can be attributed to text dot, holiday, and the list of asterisks that you gave? If those things weren't in play, of the forty percent, how much of that increase would we have likely have seen?
The text dot part's not gonna go away. I still think that was the greatest part of it. We're still gonna be on a tight timeframe next year.
That you would have longer next year if you started.
Not quite as tight, but it'll still be tight. And then we may be having to work with an adjacent contractor on 71 and doing some coordination there, so, like I said, I need, I would need to see their plans, but it sounds like they'll be well underway. The holiday was a contributing, text dot was a contributing. I don't know-
Well, the beauty is-
How much of the forty percent that was?
We're meeting again on the 18th, we're meeting again on the 25th. If the contractor's working on some type of a design, and if there's some savings there, and I know we're not gonna get the full forty percent, but if we were ten percent over, we'd be having a different conversation. It's the significant amount of money. So, I don't know, but I also know, as daylight's burning, if we don't make a decision, that's, they may come back and say, well, no, because we need to, I don't know if the specs had a start date for them. Was that in the bid documents?
The 23rd was what he submitted for a start date. I mean, we would need to be getting going with an award of bid and pre-construction meetings. I've had some off-the-cuff conversations, and he said he would look at it to see where he thought he could trim it, but we're talking trimming, not cutting forty percent, so.
Councilmember Jones, are you gonna ask a question?
So, am I to understand that your recommendation is that we do it now because of where the-
I think if we stay consistent with what we've talked about, and that's making sure the life of the asset lasts, and we're getting our money's worth, yes. I would absolutely say Old Austin Highway is the highest traffic count, it's in, it's in really bad shape. I really don't think you're gonna save any money by flipping the work, but, let's just be.
I think we should go with it.
Sorry.
Mayor, you, you probably have more knowledge engineering-wise than all of us put together. What, what are your thoughts?
The crystal ball doesn't work, where'd he go?
He said he'd stay closer.
Okay, there he is. Yeah, the, I mean, nobody really has the crystal ball, but to learn tonight, I'm concerned with only having two responsive bids, I'm concerned that you're not, you, time is money, and you've oughta, we're already, we should be two weeks into this project. And so, to have the same project over a longer amount of time, if we're already looking at possibly another core or whatever to change some of the depth, I don't think we should kick the can for five years. We're, literally, we're talking about doing this for a matter of months rather than years. And I'm just concerned, when you're, they're a great, Walker Partners is a great engineer, he clearly did his homework to come up with the probable cost, and to be forty percent over, that, that's just a huge difference with those CEOs, and they're not going as far as we've promised the citizens that they would go. And to Mayor Protim Nelson's point, there are definitely some roads that have a worse score, that may not be completely reclaimed, but could have some work done on them in the neighborhoods that would help maintain the stability of those roads. So, I would lean towards flipping it and trying next summer, and I would, if, if I had, if we had not bid it where they were working on bids over Memorial Day weekend, if it wasn't the same time as the text dot bid, if they had been able to start the day that, that school got out, if we had approved this the last meeting in April, and if it was over, it's over. But there, there are a lot of contingent factors, and the truth is, nobody really knows how much each one of those costs you. Because if you're a general contractor, you have your very best estimators working on the biggest text dot jobs, and, you know, so, that would be, that would be my thought process. And Trey, I'm open to if you think something I'm saying is incorrect.
No, you're correct. I just, when I said that, what I mean is, I don't think you'll save any money, but you will save time. I don't think it'd be significant enough.
But here's my comment, if it costs the same thing, we now know, we didn't go into something and spend forty percent more thinking we could've, should've, would've. If we get to this time next year and it's still forty percent, guess what? We bid it under two different conditions, the price is the same. So, forty percent is forty percent. And I think that, that, to the mayor's point, the variable here is, we're also under tariffs, we've seen some other construction prices going up, there's just a lot of factors. And in my career, sometimes you get lucky and you bid high and things start going down, and everything comes in under, we happen to be riding a tide where everything is over. And I think that because we've got some unknowns, the conservative approach would be to take a wait and see, let's work on the streets that we can, and we'll try this again and see. And if we come back and it's still forty percent, we haven't lost a thing.
Sure.
But I, if, if council chooses to go that way, I think we're, to use the city manager's words, we wanna be abundantly clear that it be bid in the early part of the spring when they can start, the day school is out, and we give them the most amount of time, and I would even spend some time with, I know they'll have better with the trucks coming with the emulsion going at night, but maybe longer hours, and maybe we do some, some, give them a little more generous traffic control. Old Austin Highway was Old Austin Highway, and now there's a new highway, and if we can save a considerable amount of money with just going through a few weeks of pain, I think that's ultimately the best option. Mayor Protim Nelson?
You know, it's incumbent upon us to get the best value out of the public dollar. And because this is, I don't wanna say rushed, but because of the circumstances that led to this, I'd prefer, rather than be expedient, to be, to be right. And I'm concerned if we push this through, that we're not gonna be right relative to our holistic approach to, to bringing our streets up to standard. So, I'm, I'm really leaning towards flipping these and getting those other roads into this, into the process, and then wait for the Old Austin Highway until such time as we can approach it a little bit differently and probably a little bit more holistically.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Ennis?
I just was gonna say that I agree with both Mayor Protim and Councilwoman Rogers that I was leaning this direction, but with what you've said, what the city manager said, and everything that's been said, I think the option is to flip it.
So, city manager, do we, do we not take action on this item? Do we want to make a motion to rebid? What, what's the kind of motion that you, that would be clean? I don't know, city attorney, if you have a thought on that?
I think at this point in time, the safe thing to do would be to reject all bids and essentially say that Old Austin Highway will be constructed in fiscal year 2020. I think Alan has heard the discussion, and in the next week or so, we will get next year school year and the calendar, and we'll start with the end in mind, and we'll back up, and we'll have a calendar so that we can bid this in February or March and be able to have our pre-bids and contracts and all of that, so that the day school is out, they are mobilizing equipment.
And we certainly encourage Angel Brothers to participate in the bid next time, and Erin Concrete as well, for that matter, I've known Erin many, many decades. So, council, I'm happy to entertain a motion of some sort.
I motioned that we reject all the bids and look at it again next year.
Councilmember Rogers has a motion to reject all bids.
Second.
And I have a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
No. The motion carries three to one. All right, we're moving on to 9E. I said the best for last, Trey. Consider action to approve res- Oh, it is 8:18, and we are going to take a short, five-minute recess. Sorry, Strand. So, it is 8:18, and we are in recess. I got somebody trying to catch a flight tonight, and city manager and I are catching a 5:00 AM flight tomorrow morning, so we're interested in rocking and rolling. We are going to 9E, consider action to approve resolution number R 2019-57 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, awarding a contract to Barclay's Premier Utility Services LLC in the amount of $374,765 for the construction of a sewer line related to the North Bastrop Community Rehabilitation Project attached as Exhibit A, and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents for the agreement, providing for a appealing clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, mayor, and council. I just wanna start off by saying this job is under budget, and then we can move to the rest of it. And then we can move to go up. So, if you recall-
It was the EOPC, because I couldn't find it.
It was 450.
450?
Is that correct?
Actually, that was the latest E in news estimate, but the original budget was 396.
396, and he's under all of them. Woo-hoo.
Yeah, they were very excited when they realized they were the only ones under this evening.
Well, and seven bidders helps when, you know, so that was awesome.
So, the City of Bastrop applied for a CBG grant to do some sewer improvements. The lines, you just look at the slide here, the lines in the northern of Bastrop are really deteriorated, and the different colors cause of the different sized line, replacing certain amount of eight inch, replacing quite a bit of six inch with new sewer line. The, again, the majority of it's funded through a grant fund from the Texas Department of Agriculture, or through the Texas Department of Agriculture. Again, this is gonna be one of our community projects. Once this is complete, our crews will come in to do the water lines, we'll come back and do the streets, and it should take care of everything in this area and extend the life of this sewer line for quite a while.
And I have to come in, Strand, they had bids on April 24th, and their letter was April 29th. They got their information in right away. Were we doing stuff with CBG grants?
We were, we were still reviewing some of the contracts, because they're a little different then.
Yeah, they are.
Because it's out of federal dollars that were tied with it, so it took a little longer. And you'll again see this in the budget amendment, all of the money was set aside for this, we just didn't think we would start the work until 2020, but the Department of Agriculture said, hey, here's your money, much quicker, so we're just gonna reallocate the funds to this year.
Yeah, it looked like seven good bidders, good range, they were right on top of each other, nobody left a lot of money on the table. Looks, looks good to me. Mayor Protim Nelson, any questions?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Same way with 9A, the bid has a 60-day life on it, it's been 48, so we're good.
Yeah, it's, to my knowledge, we are still good?
That would be correct.
I guess that's correct.
And then the other question that I have, and this is just for clarification, what is meant by, on the second paragraph of the letter, was the apparent low bidder?
The letter from the engineer?
Yeah, you gotta come to the mic.
Please.
That is a legalese term that we gotta use these days from a liability perspective.
Because they don't award the bid.
Yeah, so, I'm just telling you, it's nothing, I think you'll see that in a lot of, lot of letters of recommendation. You know, we don't even make letters of recommendation anymore, we just tell you who the, who the low bidder is and that they're qualified. You know, in the, in the past years ago, I used to make recommendations all the time, but our liability insurance companies don't want us taking that responsibility on, so we, you know, if we do that kind of thing, we can't carry our, we won't be able to keep our insurance. So, it, I don't want, don't read anything into that. They are the low bidder, and the numbers check out.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And you're saying apparent, but that means they turned everything in, because otherwise they would be a non-qualified bid, and you would not-
That is correct, that is correct. There is nothing problematic with that bid.
Okay.
I'll talk to our people about that wording, see if we can get that changed.
We need more lawyers, that's what we need. Mayor Protim Nelson?
I said I moved to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Protim Nelson. A second? A second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion? I know North Bastrop will be glad to have this work completed, and be good for Public Works and everybody else as well. All right, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Council, Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with a four oh vote. Resolution twenty nineteen dash five seven is approved. Moving, thank you guys very much. Appreciate it. We're backing up to item nine C. Consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty nineteen dash twenty-two of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop City Code of Ordinances Appendix A Fee Schedule, Article A thirteen point oh two, Water and Wastewater Rates and Charges, Sections thirteen point oh two point oh oh two, Waste Water Service Charge, and A thirteen point oh two point oh oh four, Water Service Charge, adding new subsections, A thirteen point oh two point oh oh two C, and subsection A thirteen point oh two point oh oh four B, as attached in Exhibit A, providing for findings of fact, enactment, repealer, severability, effective date, codification, proper notice and meeting, and move to include on the June twenty-fifth consent agenda for a second reading, Ms. Waldron.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you, you have an ordinance that has been reviewed mainly created by our consultant, New Gen Strategies, and also reviewed by our legal department. And it is, it changed a few words, it changed our regular rates to where there is an actual retail rate section, and now creating a wholesale rate section. And Chris is going to go over the particulars about the new rates that were covered in a workshop back in February, I believe, but he's going to go over those particulars. If you have any specific questions about the new rates, he will be able to address those.
Chris?
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, Chris Eckert with New Gen Strategies and Solutions. It's a pleasure to be with you again tonight. Let me be very clear, the ordinance in front of you tonight does not change retail rates. All this does is establish wholesale rates. These are rates that you've seen before, it's just putting them into the ordinance so that the contracts that you have already seen and gone through, so that you now have rates associated with those contracts and can charge for wholesale service. So, very quickly, within the ordinance, it starts with wholesale water, we are recovering several components, excuse me, wholesale wastewater, there are several components of that. The debt service that we previously talked about, you've seen that in the contracts, that's recovered via impact fees. But then there's a customer charge, and then we recover the cost of flow and entreating BOD and TSS within the wastewater. We recover that through two different structures, a customer charge and a volumetric charge. You can see those on the screen right now. The customer charge, that's just the charge to bill them. So, we're billing the wholesale customer, we bill them, the cost of that billing is two dollars and twenty-three cents a month, so we charge them for that. At the same time, on the wastewater side, the volumetric charge is three dollars and eighty-three cents per thousand gallons. So, again, that's what's in the ordinance, we've gone through the study, we've looked at the cost figures, so that's what drives those rates. In addition to the wholesale wastewater, the ordinance then moves to wholesale water. We have several components in wholesale water. We are recovering the cost of supply, this is the cost that the city incurs to buy water from Aqua Sud, and so you're simply passing that cost through to your wholesale customer. Then there's the transmission cost, that is the cost to the city to move the water through the system to the wholesale customer. There are two types of rate structures within the contract within this ordinance. There's a fixed charge, that is charged per million gallons per day of subscribed capacity. Your wholesale customer will say, I need X amount of capacity, they're going to pay for that capacity. The second part of the rate structure is a volumetric charge, a charge per thousand gallons for the water. And so those rates you see on the screen, the monthly fixed charge, you see the supply component and the transmission component, again, that's per million gallons per day of capacity. Just like on wastewater, there's a customer charge, a charge for billing, so that's built in. And there's also a volumetric charge that is paid per thousand gallons of water actually consumed. So, again, all that is outlined within the ordinance, it aligns with the contracts you've seen, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
You are gifted at simplifying very complicated things, and I very much appreciate that. Council, any questions for Ms. Eckert?
I'd like to stress that we have gone over this on numerous occasions.
Yes, sir.
And it is complicated, but to thank, thank you to you and the city manager for bringing us this water trough and making us drink many, many times.
Thank you.
So, the goal of these wholesale rates is to make sure that we don't have our existing citizens subsidizing big commercial rates, and we're also not making a mint off of these people. We're trying to be fair and reasonable, recover the cost, and be, treat all of our community citizens, whether they are, because these whole, some of these wholesale properties may be outside of our city limits even.
That is correct. So, when we've gone through the study, we've ensured that we are recovering the cost, that we're looking at what the level of service is that you're going to provide, and aligning the cost to that level of service. So, we want to make sure that you are recovering your costs. The other advantage of the way you've gone about this, you are setting up uniform rates, you're setting up a uniform contract and uniform rates, so it makes administration of this much more, I don't want to say simplistic, because it's still complex, but it does make it easier, and it makes it more equitable across all of your wholesale customers.
And so, as, because we know, there's, Bastrop is a fabulous place to be, and we have a lot of people come in this direction, it gives us, we are setting a policy that says everyone is treated fair and equitably.
Absolutely.
It's not a renegotiate the deal depending on how many acres they bought, where they, it's, it gives us some consistency and predictability for developers and other folks that are interested in doing business with us.
Absolutely. This is the way wholesale service should be done.
Thank you. Council, any further questions or comments? May I move to approve? I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Jones.
Second.
A second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes with a four zero vote, the ordinance is approved, and you are free to move about the cabin. Hope you catch your flight on time. All right, council, we're going to the last item for individual consideration, it's item nine B. Consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number twenty nineteen dash two-one of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty nineteen in accordance with existing statutory requirements, appropriating the various amounts herein as attached in Exhibit A, repealing all prior ordinances and actions in conflict here with establishing an effective date, and move to include on the June twenty-fifth City Council consent agenda for a second reading, Ms. Waldron.
All right. So, this is a budget amendment, the budget was approved in September. Since then, we've had some unforeseen expenses and increased the budget appropriations. I just wanted to remind the audience, financial management policy states that when a budget adjustments are required between departments or funds, these must be approved by city council. The first fund we're addressing is salary, the general fund. I know we've talked about the salary savings that we placed in the budget document, this amendment is actually taking the action to sweep the savings year-to-date and get rid of, I guess, get rid of that hundred and seventy-two thousand that we had already budgeted for, and also put the rest of it against the, I put it, an election, the election costs are in the amendment, and the rest of it is going into contingency funds. It is the financial policy that any salary savings be centrally controlled by the city manager, and so that we're sweeping the salary savings so that those can be re-appropriated as needed. The other amendment is a very small one, it's an insurance proceeds for some damage to fire equipment, so we're just increasing the revenue and increasing the expense to cover that cost. The next fund is the innovation fund. This is addressing the contract for the city hall remodel, so that's been discussed earlier. This is just the amendment to increase the loan from BPNL by a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to cover the additional construction and the furniture cost for that remodel project. Street maintenance fund, we will eliminate this amendment, and I'll go over that in just a second. Water wastewater capital fund, this is an amendment to address the North Main Sewer Project that Trey referred to earlier, the contract was approved. We're just moving that, those funds from fiscal twenty twenty to fiscal twenty nineteen. We also had another project that was originally budgeted out of a bond fund. As I've explained, there was another project that ran over, that was brought to y'all, y'all were aware of that, but we did have to cover the rest of that project in this fund.
Tracy, that change order, we talked about that several months ago. Why are we just now doing the budget amendment for it?
Well, we have finally gotten to the end of Well J project, and so now I'm moving-
To know the total amount, okay, okay, thank you.
The BPNL fund, this is a carryover from fiscal nineteen, these projects that BPNL was working on are actually being completed in twenty twenty, so we're carrying those funds over. Hotel occupancy tax, the convention center actually has had two very large groups come in that have utilized their catering services, this is also, has a related corresponding expense that's associated with it. This budget amendment just increases the revenue for the catering service, but also increases the expense for the catering service, so it's a neutral amendment. The impact fee fund, this was brought to my attention when I was reviewing all of our capital projects, that we had actually earmarked to use some of these impact fee funds for one of the wastewater collection system products, and so this is just to appropriate those funds so that it can be applied to that project.
Is it for North Main, or is it for the matching part?
No, it's for the wastewater, it's one of the wastewater collections, the part of the plant, yes.
I said North Main, but I mean North Bastrop. Is it part of, to fund the matching part of a-
It's part of the plant project.
The plant, okay, I got you, okay.
Yes.
The wastewater treatment plant.
There is a particular project for the collection lines, and it's part of that project. Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District, this amendment appropriates unbudgeted revenues that we have actually received from the developer on the assessments on their property, and it's also making an amendment to the legal line to increase that due to the statutory audit that we are under. The grant fund is a neutral amendment, increasing the revenue and also increasing the expense, and this is related to the North Main Sewer Project. And I believe that is it. On the move for approval, the amendment would read that amount herein as attached in Exhibit A, removing the street maintenance fund, we would just want to remove that fund in the motion.
And then, even if it's on the consent agenda for the next meeting, it would be a revised attachment?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Council, any other questions for Ms. Wald- good job, Ms. Waldron.
I did have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Rogers?
On the movement of funds on the construction of the city hall, it was only, what, forty-one thousand over, if I correct the budget? But we're moving more than that, so.
The total cost needed to include furniture, and it didn't.
Oh, okay.
They didn't bid furniture.
All right, I just, we had budgeted three hundred, that's why I was curious if we-
That's right. So, the construction is part of it, and the difference is for furniture.
Okay.
And there's also, there was an architecture fee, so that, so out of the three hundred thousand that BPNL had funded, there was a sixty thousand architecture contract, so there was only two forty-one left for construction.
Right, that's why I saw the two forty-one, I was like, what happened to the sixty thousand? So, thank you for bringing that up. Thank you.
All right, good questions. Council, any other questions?
Madam Mayor, move to approve of, excluding, move to approve as presented with the exclusion of the street maintenance fund. Exclusion.
Motion from Mayor Protem Nelson?
I second that.
A second from Councilmember Rogers, that we would be approving ordinance twenty nineteen dash twenty-one for first reading with the removal of the street maintenance portion of the resolution. Is there any further question or discussion? And it will be, yeah, it's written that it'll be on the consent agenda, but we'll have a new attachment for it. Any further question or discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Ordinance twenty nineteen dash twenty-one will be placed on the consent agenda with the revisions. It is eight forty-two, we will be going into executive session for item ten A. City council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Section five-five-one-point oh seven-two of the Texas Government Code to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of the real estate property. It's eight forty-two, and we are in executive session. Thank you, council, it is eight fifty-two, and we are out of executive session. We're moving on to item number eleven, take any necessary or appropriate action on matters posted for consideration in closed executive session, there will be no actions taken tonight. We are on item twelve.
Move to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn from Councilmember Jones, it is eight fifty-three, and we are adjourned.